Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We'll go over everybody to the budget hearing. And we will go ahead and get started. Thanks for coming. So Mr. Lusick, we're going to begin with the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kalman. We will start by simply asking this friend to read the title of the bill in 1553. It's directed.
Bill number 1553, enacted in accordance with 2024, 2025 annual budget appropriations.
And Mr. Stamp, would you like to queue this up for us and introduce what we have in the budget before us?
Yes, good evening, county council, and everybody in this evening. I want to just take a moment, council, to say a couple of things relative to the proposed FY25 budget. First, it's just a shape of discussion in that council every year works beginning in November into December to carve out its continued plan and staff to identify clear goals and objectives set forth for the next year. And then in January, we were able to work together with county manager department heads and heads of agencies and organizations to craft a proposed budget to get out for you this evening. I'd like to take the opportunity to sincerely thank the council for their support. I'd like to recognize Marcus Sparks, our finance director, Caitlin Fox, our clerk, the assistant finance director, Justin Morris, assistant county manager, and all those department heads and many heads of agencies and organizations who work together with us, understanding that we can't give everybody everything they want, but we try to do our best to give everyone enough to accomplish their mission. Additionally, I would like to just talk a little bit about the strategy that we use this year and have done successfully in the past. We use a conservative budget strategy where we try to overestimate expenditure and underestimate revenue, conservative as well in the past. We continue to do that in crafting this FY25 budget. We also maintain a healthy fund balance, which is a savings account. This is very important in times when we find ourselves in the economic uncertainties that we see, and we need to be prepared for the unknown. We maintain a healthy fund balance. And then it's important to note that Talbot County maintains the lowest property tax and second lowest income tax in the state of Maryland of any county of the 23 counties in the city. That's a very powerful statement and something that we're very proud of. I would also like to say that this budget clearly prioritizes public safety and education. I'm not saying it doesn't support all the other general areas of government and support the organization, but again, it does prioritize public safety and education. We use an overarching strategy when we move forward through the year. We call it a free P strategy. As personnel processes and projects, under personnel, we find ourselves right now in a very competitive work environment, where retention of our employees and recruitment of new talent is extremely important. And we recognize that our employees drive success in the missions we wear every day in our service to the community. And then under the processes, we continue to evaluate our county government and find those processes that could benefit by leveraging technology to improve. And so this is our second component of our strategy. Finally, we have been engaging in a number of significant infrastructure projects, which are part of our position. Next year, we're going to be pursuing the completion of our public safety building, the North Emergency Medical Service Station, put some new paramedics through the north end of the county, extension of sewer rescue field, such as to clean up tributaries, and then expand the library at St. Michael's, and as well as expanding the Chatham School. Finally, I just want to talk a little bit about our current FY24 budget. I'm pleased to say that we've got a snapshot of where we are today, our meeting our goals and objectives, and we are on the target to do all to end the year within the projected budget, which is significant. I would also like to say that we've accomplished a number of pretty important things. A component of our airport monitoring project is underway, and we've got some completion out there. We've completed the gymnasium, the district hall, towards our community center. We will be coming to final completion of the new public health department at achievement Park in Houston at the end of June this year. That's exciting. We have been able to make capital improvements in our region to wait for our treatment plant at St. Michael's, and again, extending sewer out of the Warlow, and we will continue that project. And we've completed infrastructure enhancements through the Department of Corrections and our courthouse, and we've made major roads there, resurfacing, after completed resurfacing across our 370 miles of roadway, and a bunch of other projects. Staff is very proud of the work that's been done. We will continue to move forward. This one on the hand is our finance director, Marcus Sparks.
Good evening, everyone. What you have before you from FY25 is a balanced general fund budget of $163,970,000 for the 2025 fiscal year. This budget continues the county's conservative budget methodology. These budget practices have served the county well and have placed us in a healthy financial position. Some highlights of the fiscal year 2025 budget include revenues that are 2% over FY24 property tax revenues in accordance with our charter. We also added 1 cent to the property tax rate that was authorized by the voters of Talbot County in November 2020 to support and enhance public safety expenditures, a 4 cent education supplement to support Talbot County Public Schools budget initiatives. The funding to Talbot County schools of $54.6 million is an increase of $3.65 million from their FY24 funding, that is $2.8 million above the local share funding, which is required by the state. Capital improvement project funding, also identified as CIP funding for Talbot County Public Schools, includes $16.9 million for a capital project request for Chapel District Elementary School renovations, and $1.5 million in additional CIP funding that council has appropriated for TCPS to determine the priority of its use against their CIP requests. For county operations, this budget has included a 3% cost of living adjustment and one step for county employees. In this budget, the county has continued its investment in public safety by adding four public safety communication specialists, also known as 911 operators, and in addition to one student resource officer supervisor. The county has also increased appropriations to outside agencies by $1.2 million. Fund balance reserves will be used to make a significant investment in county infrastructure, capital improvements in the FY25 budget in the amount of $27.5 million. Fund balance reserves will also be used to invest in $2.98 million of the purchase of vehicles and equipment recognized in this budget as capital outlay. In our FY25 budget, we've projected 12.3 increase in property tax revenues, a 19% increase in income tax revenues that reflect a slight complication to budgeting our income tax revenues in order to align them with a level that had been realized over the last five years. These revenues are historically volatile for the county and must be carefully projected and monitored. These increases, combined with projected increases of other local taxes, governmental revenues, and the nonrecurring transfers of impact fees from the development and PAC fund, along with the nonrecurring transfers of fund balance reserves, will bring us to an overall increase in revenues of 27.26%. Talbot County receives most of its revenues from property and income taxes. Together, they make up 81.1% of the county's operating revenues and 61.5% of the total FY25 budgeted revenues. Recreation and transfer taxes are the next largest group of county revenues, contributing approximately 8.6% of the county's operating revenues. In FY21 and FY22, Talbot County experienced its highest levels of recreation and transfer tax revenues. In FY23 and FY24, these revenues moved to more normal levels, and our FY25 budget projections are aligned with those levels. These revenues are highly or heavily tied to activating the real estate market in Talbot County. The county has historically made very conservative projections of its revenues due to the volatility of its income, recreation, and transfer tax revenues. This strategy of underbudgeting our revenues has enabled us to build healthy reserves. In this budget cycle, we've modified our approach by more accurately projecting revenues to be in alignment with revenues that county has received over the last five years. This realignment shifts us away from building reserves and shifts us to supporting our general fund operating expenditures. In November 2020, the voters in Talbot County supported an amendment to our charter that enabled 1 cent to be added to our property tax rate for the support of the county's expenditures related to public safety. This began in FY22 and will end with the FY26 budget. Council has an opportunity to create a valid initiative to be included on the ballot in November 2024 if it chooses to ask the citizens to vote to continue this valuable support to the county's public safety, which includes the sheriff's office, detention center, Department of Emergency Services, and our volunteer fire departments. The county has used the revenues from the 1 cent for enhancing public safety for 26 positions, including additional deputies, school resource officers for our schools, paramedics, EMTs, and 911 operators, also a career ladder for the Department of Emergency Services, and also the inclusion of the sheriff's office, paramedics, and EMTs into the layoffs retirement program, and the Department of Corrections officers inclusion into the course retirement program. Leaves and course are enhanced retirement programs through the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System for public safety employees. As you can see on the slide here, the county has used more than the revenues generated from that 1 cent to enhance public safety personnel serving the citizens and visitors to Talbot County. Our proposed property tax rate of .7910 for county-owned properties was calculated using property tax revenues 2% over FY24 revenues in accordance with our charter, then with the prior year revenue levels that were certified by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, an additional 1 cent to support public safety, and a 4 cent educational supplement to support Talbot County Public Schools budget initiatives. Our overall property tax rate will increase 4.76 cents over FY24, which amounts to a 6.4% increase. The county tax bill for a home with a property assessment of $300,000 will increase from $2,230.20 to $2,373, which is a $142.01 increase, $120 of which is attributable to the education supplement. And we provided here a sample of what the homeowner's tax bill will look like. And here in this slide, you can see the property tax rates of Baltimore City and the 23 counties in Maryland. This information comes from the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation website. As you can see, Talbot County has the lowest property tax rate in Maryland. And since I made this presentation of the budget at the introduction, I've updated the schedule to... It was newly looked under counties' property tax rates. In the schedule found on their website, I observed that they have several components of their property tax that were not included in the overall property tax rate that was reported to have stacked. These components are comparable to our public safety 1 cent and educational supplement, and I revised the schedule to reflect that. This correction places Talbot County at the lowest property tax rate in the state, and this is one of the few times you all hear me say that I'm glad you're in last place. In comparison to other counties, Talbot County has the second lowest income tax rate in 2024, which ratings best describes Talbot County's income tax revenues when it says income taxes are a higher percentage of revenues than is true for most Maryland counties. That is partially due to the very low tax environment compared with the rest of the state, which provides incentive for a small number of high-income earners with second homes to declare their income in the county. This is why Talbot County's income tax revenues are so volatile and difficult to predict, and that is due to the small percentage of high-wage earners that claim Talbot County as their home. Our FY25 budget represents an increase in projections for income tax revenues at $37 million, which is in alignment with levels we received in the last five years. Overall, education expenditures for Talbot County represent 37.7% of its total budget. This includes expenses for Talbot County Public Schools, Chesapeake College, and the Talbot County Free Library. Talbot County Public Schools alone represents 43.4% of the county's operating expenditures. The Maryland blueprint required local share funding was increased by $810,000 in FY25. In addition to the mandated funding, the county has included an additional appropriation of $2.8 million. Funding to support Talbot County Public Schools increased overall by $3.65 million above FY24 levels. By moving the increase in school funding to the educational supplement, the county is providing a more structurally balanced budget. Included in the CIP budget is $16.9 million in the capital project request for Chapel District Elementary School renovations, an additional fund and additional funding of $1.25 million for other capital improvement projects to be prioritized by Talbot County Public Schools. And while not apart from appropriations to schools, the county further supports the safety at Talbot County Public Schools by including an additional position for a school resource officer supervisor in this budget. This will enable our Talbot County Sheriff's Office to ensure that each school always has proper coverage and an SRO on site during school hours. Public safety accounts for 22.7% of the total budget, with general government at 10.7%. There are $2.9 million in capital outlay expenditures included in this budget. These nonrecurring expenditures and the level of funding required for these types of expenditures can fluctuate based upon equipment and vehicles needed as well as funding availability. The FY25 budget also includes an investment in county infrastructure of $27.5 million to be paid for with fund balance reserves. Personnel actions that were taken in this budget include 3% cost of living adjustment and 1 step for employees, also 5 new public safety positions, and other benefit actions for public safety were taken. These will provide recruitment and retention opportunities for our public safety departments. Total fund balance and ready-made funds reserve, the fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2023, was $90.7 million, which grew 22.4 billion from the end of FY22. At the end of FY23, the Talbot County, Talbot County had $15.9 million designated as ready-made reserves. These reserves give the county less exposure to the risks associated with revenue and expenditure volatility, particularly in times of inflation or recession. We are still experiencing elevated levels of inflation, and those increases are also included in this budget. This strong fund balance is a result of the county's conservative budgeting methods, and those conservative budgeting methods are the guidance for staff and the formation of the budget that you have before you. And I'd like to close with the county's report card, individual report card, let's call it that. Here, in September of 2022, we were rated by Moody's Investment Service and Vichy Ratings as a part of our process to go out for bond issuance. Moody's said financially, the county is very strong, and the management team is generally conservative in its budgeting. Our credit strength or low long-term liabilities with a manageable long-term capital plan and a very strong reserve position. This is assessment of the county's financial resilience as being in the highest category is based on the combined strength of its fund balance position, its ample expenditure flexibility, and its strong ability to adjust revenues through policy action to counterbalance its historically volatile revenues. The county typically increases its property tax revenue by the full amount allowed annually under the county charter, both the property and the income tax remaining, the lowest in the state. And I'd like to close with thanking the council. This really is a key matter, and we could not present this budget to you as a finance director, as a finance director, county manager, without the support of council. We couldn't do it without cooperation and really great collaboration with our department head, Stan, also, and also our most excellent finance department.
I can finish your presentation and stack for the proposed FY25 budget. Thank you, council. Glad you did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Stan Sparks, for the presentation. Unless we have any questions from the council, we can open this public hearing for on the bill in 1553, two comments from the general public. We ask that you please come forward to the microphone, that you say your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. If you're representing yourself, five minutes if you are the one who is representing a group or association. We did provide a list to sign up to speak in advance, and we'll call those people who signed up first, anyone that they signed up. If you have not, if you have not signed up, you will still have that opportunity to speak, but only after those who have signed up in advance. We will start with a representative list, which is Christina Gerson.
My name is Christina Burston. My address is 34135 in Easton. County council members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate the background and the broad overview, as well as all the detailed information of the very hard work we've done to create this budget. I am here first to inform us as a parent of a child who attends Talbot County Schools. I appreciate that the county council has sent this to fully fund the blueprint progress as required by the state of Maryland. I would like to take a few minutes to talk about the remaining significant gap between what TCPS is requested and what the county council has committed to fund. I also speak as a local family doctor who deeply cares about this community. Over the years, I've been involved on projects to recruit more primary pediatric physicians here to be surgeon's ward. Many of the potential doctors who are considering moving here consider where to raise a new family or where to start a family. One of the key considerations that I hear over and over is how well our schools performing, as well as how well is the local government funding and supporting those schools with what it needs. Speaking as a parent and a community member, I recognize the high numbers of students who require special education services, and also those who are English language learners here in Talbot County. These students need and deserve specially trained staff who can meet their needs. I'm concerned that with the still remaining gap between what TCPS is requested and what the county council has committed to fund, I would like to ask that we ensure that physicians for special education and English language learning are actively staffed. With respect and gratitude, I appreciate your work with leading our county.
Thank you. Elizabeth Walters is next, followed by Amy Wilk.
I'd like to get back into the order, but that's okay. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Walters. My address is 11568 Old Road, Maryland. I am a CBS parent. I am also representative for travel to the superintendent, and I sit as an at-large member on citizen advisory for the need to deploy the education here. I want to say first and foremost, I fully support the full budget. I also fully support the work that we've done here. I appreciate everything that you're saying, all the details. I'm going to go home and tell my guys about the day and impact fees that you guys have to have every day, but I don't want anything else, because I don't want to sit on these committees. But here's what I want to put forth for 2026. Ready? We're not even talking about today. This is dumb, right? We are talking about 2026. When I Google the best district school in Maryland in 2026, I want to see Howard County. I appreciate last place. I want to be last place in the school system. Howard County is beating us. I don't want that. When I Google the best employer in this county, I don't think the way the company should come to the top. I think it should be Talbot County Public Schools, and I think the number next year, Dr. Papakai and the Board of Ed who gave as much cautious conservatism to the budget for the day presented to you guys, because I sit in some of those committees that talks about that, and the Niglendon and the Panin should get creative and look for free things. I don't want to do free things anymore. I want to buy a little bit because of all these young faces. These young faces are the people that you're seeing needs to recruit to be a doctor. When we talk about growing our own, I want the doctors to come from these folks right here. That's where they're going to come from. The number we need to add to her information next year is $11 million. Whatever she comes to you with, you just add $11 million. That closes the gap between us and Howard County, and we pay that spend per people, and we may not come in last anymore on income tax and property tax, but I'm okay with that if it means we get to come in first in employer and first on district. I have a couple more seconds. I want to point out that the number one school in the United States of America funds their teachers at $138,000 a year, a striking salary to save the year. I think we can do a little better. And our $200,000 house, the $52,000 employee can't buy that. So let's do a little better in 2026. Peace be with you for this year. Thank you very much.
And we have two lines here, so we can get the next person queued up behind that. Amy Wilk Walters here, and followed by Amy Burman.
Thank you, county council members. All right, and Susan Walters, I'm a senior chancellor. Thank you for having me speak tonight. Chapel has amazing clubs. My kids need to start the project if they want to be. I'm proud. My president teaches at Chapel, they still write to me, but she needs to not mind to be teaching. My first wife teaches amazing, because she has the power to make things happen. My kindergarten teacher is amazing, because she is kind of sweet and thoughtful and knows what she wants to be. And a long, long time ago on a pre-k day, I learned that Chapel is excellently safe. And I want all TCPS to have the same experience. When I'm trying to say Chapel's amazing, and I want to stay there. Thank you for your time tonight. I love speaking.
Thank you. Amy Burman, followed by Amy Wilk.
Hi. My name is Amy Burman. My address is 26334 R T D Shores. I'm going to be great for my benefit, because I'm really nervous. I live in Easton. I'm a graduate of Easton High, and I have two children that attend St. Michael's Elementary. But tonight, I'm speaking from my role as a reading tutor at SMES. Year-to-year, I drop attendance unfunded from the county, like so many other positions. Maryland Senate Bill 734 mandates that students are screened and tested, and those with reading difficulties receive interventions. We screen all students in K through 3 with a test called DIBELS three times a year. Based on DIBELS, we decide that students in grade 1 through 3 meet tier 1 or tier 3 intervention. Sorry, tier 2 or tier 3. Tier 2 students receive in-class small group instruction, while tier 3 are pulled by reading tutors for small group instruction. There are 153 students in grades 1 through 3 enrolled at SMES. The number of students currently receiving tier 2 interventions in grades 1 through 3 is 52. The number of students currently receiving tier 3 is 42. That means that 61% of our students from grades 1 through 3 are receiving reading intervention. I asked our reading coach what the impact on her job would be without tutors, and she said, honestly, I don't know what we would do without tutors. We need to have students in small group interventions three times a week for thirty minutes. Ideally, a small group should be four students or less. Without tutors, my job would completely change. I wouldn't be able to co-plan tutors, progress monitor students, track data, assess students, et cetera. I would become an interventionist versus a reading specialist. Having tutors allows my role to be much more focused on the whole school. Without tutors, I would be seeing students constantly. I see this progress, students making small groups. I bond with them, I root for them, and I celebrate them with them when they succeed. With such a focus on testing and scores and students falling behind, schools depend on being well-funded to provide services for students to succeed. I hope you will consider fulfilling the request of TCTS for the sake of our students. Thank you.
Okay, Megan, we'll move it like, followed by Kim Gildes.
Good evening. Hi. I'm a graduate of Talbot County Public Schools. Personally, I serve my community as a teacher and instructor for genealogy and oncology. Likewise, I recently served four years on Talbot County School Board. Therefore, I personally have the confidence to go with awarded funding for a large project, project such as a turf field. I think it's safe to say that most of you know who I am. Something that you may not know is that I once was a law school student without direction. The initial goal of my freshman year was to wear a safari. Consequently, I received two alcohol side issues within the first one of school. I was heavily under the wrong drug lately. Fortunately, my guidance counselor at that time, Debbie McQuaid, who also had to be a field hockey coach, who later recruited me into her hockey team. Playing field hockey led to basketball, followed by softball, ultimately turning into a free sport athlete. Now, with the new focus on school studies and my attendance, because you have to make ready for the tennis and play the game. Next, that's towards the twenty twenty-four. I'm a busy parent of two student athletes. My oldest played field hockey in high school and a doctor college with primary for pre-med and medical sciences. My youngest daughter is a junior who obviously transferred from her local San Marcos High School to Easton High School last year, enabling her to play with field hockey in the cross. Current research has shown how sports positively influence students' academic performance and overall education. Athletes learn to develop routines to accommodate their sporting commitments with translate into discipline study habits. Having the ability to double multiple sports abilities effectively is a vital skill that contributes to academic success and a thriving professional life. Similarly, time management skills foster through sports, enabling students to utilize their time more efficiently, aiding to improve academic performance. In addition, forced by superior mental health and wellbeing, which is closely linked to affective and academic performance. This though activity increases blood flow to the brain, improving concentration, motivating classroom behavior. Also, key work and social skills developed in sports directly apply to group projects and collaborative tasks in academic settings. Students who participate in sports are able to work effectively as part of their team. Participation in sports plays a crucial and cultivating leadership skills among students, which can greatly benefit their academic and future professional life. These leaderships during student sports help students develop confidence, initiative, and ability to influence and guide others. Now, who would have thought that skills and energy developed in playing fields can be invaluable assets in classrooms, helping students achieve academic excellence and prepare them for future challenges in higher education beyond. Today, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity has spurred that they could wish a wish, has so graciously granted Elgin's selfless wish, a potential turf field. Keep in mind, she could wish her multitude of other things, which would not have benefited this county or students. This field, this year, could be the gift that will keep home the added by engaging and also will save a normalizing community, just like that. So then, here's a help. I'd also like to point out that Queen Anne County has four turf fields, as well as many other county houses. And I'd also like to invite the funds specifically earmarked for the turf field as opposed to openly getting in with capital projects and allowing the school to project. Thank you.
Followed by Kim Gildes. Next, we have a pleasant week. Nice to see you.
Hello. My name is Kim Gooden. I'm with the Tennessee Local Department of Labor and State. I have been the Easton High School field hockey coach for the past two years. I have been blessed with getting to know Elgin and the passion for field hockey and life. Elgin has sent an inspiration to me and her teammates. Her wish for a turf field with the Easton High School complex is one of the most selfless acts that I've witnessed. Elgin wants to leave a legacy for her fellow athletes, and I very good for her understanding of support. I honestly don't understand why we have to fight so hard and for so long to bring a turf field into Talbot County. Not only will it benefit the entire community, the schools, the restaurants, the hotels, the shops, for allowing tournaments to happen, practices for other teams, et cetera, but it will allow our athletes to compete with the surrounding counties, so that we can put turf fields in our schools and communities. I watch my girls play teams with turf fields, and we are always a half set behind. But we have the skill set, but the speed of the game can not be measured in practice when you're playing on grass. We have upgraded to real grass fields, which is much better than the grass field. However, the fields are not made in properly. Our grass gets cut once, maybe twice a week, when the guy who cuts it tells me that it should be ready to cut every other day. In, in the budget is not allowed, and he can't cut. There are rucks, holes, and uneven areas that cause athletes to turn their ankles and allow the ball to fly out. It should be very dangerous with field hockey. I see a lot of recess because the ball can be out of control or hit in the dirt. A turf field is level and the rise of moisture in the surface will allow more control of the ball. I have been a resident of this county my whole life, and I love it. It's a small, it's a small town living at its finest. The one thing that I do believe is missing is supporting our kids. I watch my girls come to practice after a long day at school. They put their shin guards on, they clean some of the soil, and they head out to the field. Two hours to bed, five days a week. They get their homework to complete their homework, to get up and go again the next day. But most of my girls have part-time jobs where they go in the evenings after practice and they don't get it. They put their time in and effort through it, and let's just support them in their efforts. I look around this county, and I have seen really great things happening in this town. The law courts, and even a dog park with parrot, a special turf. That would, that would stoke a little bit. These are amazing additions to our county, but they're not here toward their youth. We need to show our kids they are important to us, and we can't hide them. Remember, these kids don't want to see us taking care of you and the future. And yeah, I just wanted to give our chance for all the kids in Talbot County, bringing a turf field into the Easton High School stadium and build a sense of pride in our kids. Let's show them that we support them, and Elgin's wish for a turf field. Elgin was young again, and athletes will ever have to deal with. I think the least we can do is to make a wish come true. Thank you.
I think a few of my girls might have signed back in, who was a signage, and not speak. There may be a couple of them there if I just wave and say.
I'm Ricky Gutanovic, president and CEO of the Wish for the County out of the festival Maryland. We are the local chapter of the Wish for America Association, and we're responsible for granting wishes to all children two and a half to eighteen years old without qualifying diagnosis in Maryland, the entire state of Maryland, DC, and Virginia. Every year, there are four hundred and fifty children that qualify for our programs, and every single one of them gets their wish. Not many of those children do the selfless thing that Elgin has done and wish to give her wish to others and different community. And I'm here tonight to just offer my support and encouragement, and thank you to fully fund the appropriation that is needed to make this wish come true. And a lot of people think that wishes are just a nice thing to do for children. It's a warm and fuzzy feeling. But there is ample and growing, here with the medical research on the impact of a wish, and how it improves a child's mental, emotional, and physical well-being. Fewer hospital stays just being part of the wish process. Increased compliance with their treatment. Pure trips to the ER. Seventy-five percent of wish kids actually go on and live through and beyond their illness, and credit the wish as a turning point in their medical journeys. We want that for health, health, excuse me. I have to confess it very important to know that a wish affects an entire community. We have three hundred and fifty volunteers across the state, including those who are working with Elgin and her family. And we also have two other children currently in Talbot County who are waiting for their wish to come true. We have partnered with other state governments for children who wish to have playgrounds in the past. The average cost of a wish here in Maryland is ten thousand dollars. That doesn't even include staff time or overhead. We would love, we would love to be able to fully fund this wish ourselves. But obviously, it would be a common cost of the wishes of many, many, many other children being delayed and receiving their life-changing, life-changing wish. We would pledge, I know that my understanding is there's a gap of about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars right now to fully fund this appropriation. We could put in sixteen. I know it gets us not very far, but if you could come up with the rest, we'll have some skin to gain here. We want to be able to tell Elgin a story for many generations and to inspire other children. You know, one of the things when I think about the community impact of a wish, we talk about mental, emotional well-being, and a community coming together to support a child. But being here tonight, I also realized that the impact of a wish here in this room is both these young ladies actively, productively participating in civil discourse and democracy. And my gosh, what an example that they are setting for all of us here tonight. So I hope they'll take that into account, too, and thank you for your support. We really want to be a part of this amazing experience for Elgin and for all of the children here in town.
Followed by Kelly Thompson.
Hi. My name is Ricky Gutanovic, and I am representing Talbot County Public Schools. Just wanted to first of all say thank you for allowing us to have this public forum. I am a theater teacher at Easton High School as well, as well as a oral teacher. And having just finished directing the musical Footloose, and the theme of that show being a community coming together is amazing, seeing all of this come together. So thank you for, for having this opportunity for everyone. I also want to thank you all for the, for the one point five million that you've given for the capital projects. I am here asking for a specific project very near and dear to my heart, and that would be the Talbot County Auditorium housing site of a lighting system that is there. The lighting system at Talbot County has not been updated since the early nineties, and it is on its last day. And it is in a place where they don't make the parts to even fix the, the, the system that is currently there anymore. And I know a lot of people, and I'm going to try to make this as simple as I can, but the way a lighting system works, we have a lighting fixture, which I will say thank you as a Talbot County for providing lights back in two thousand and five, when, when Bill was six there, when I started in two thousand and three. So instruments, fixtures were provided, but the lights plug in to a plug or a circuit, and that circuit runs to a dimmer panel. Now, the dimmer panel is the brains of the system. The brains are almost like the fuse box, if you will. The fuse box, the dimmer panel, then runs to the lighting board, which is basically the switches. The dimmer panel right now is failing, and we have band-aided many, 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 many times. The lighting board right now, if you will go back in time with me, to the amber-colored Packard Bell monitor, that's what's there right now. But I will also say that the lights that are in the auditorium, the system that is there, the way it's connected, that it's not just the lights for the stage. Once, once the dimmer panel goes, the auditorium is basically useless because there will not be any lights in there for the house or anything. Because that's the way it is, it is situated. So I am asking, we did get a, we had asked for an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for that to be, to be fully funded. And that estimate was done more than eighteen months ago, so hopefully that will cover everything that, that needs to, that needs to go in there. Obviously, I speak on behalf of, of the arts and the theater departments. But a lot of people don't realize how much goes on in the Talbot County Auditorium. It just so happens to be at Easton High School. Some of those examples, of course, shows which are near and dear to my heart for Easton High School, Easton Middle School, band choir concerts for Easton High School and Easton Middle School, all the elementary programs for Easton Elementary, for Chapel District Elementary, as well as by March, their holiday concerts, their spring concerts, all of those things. Community band, my community theater group Crashbox does summer camps there and performances there. We just had All-Shore Band Concert there. We, of course, have the Waterfowl Festival that has their world championship duck calling there. Talbot County Public Schools opening day that invites the community and all of our partners to the auditorium to be part of that amazing celebration. If you haven't been there, it is truly, truly uplifting. As well as Easton High School graduation. I would, and as the person that usually is the first phone call when there is a problem on the first phone calls or there is a problem with the lighting system, I would be eager for any of those programs to have to shut down because of the lighting system failing. I'm trying to combine all of this stuff into a very short lead for this to be fully funded. But it is something that is very, very important, not only for the students, not only for the programs that happen onstage, but for every one of the community members that comes into that auditorium. I can speak again, on Footloose, we had almost three thousand people that just came to see the show. And again, if the lights had gone up, that would not have happened, and that would not have been provided to our community. So with that, much more to say. Again, I want to thank you for all of your support for the schools, for Talbot County Public Schools, as well as the whole community, because coming together is something that is, that is very important. And I will ask that this project is fully funded for myself, for the community, for the students, for everybody that uses that space. And if there are any questions about our work, I'd be happy to do your tour. But if there are any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'm happy to talk and walk you through any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
If your system used LED fixtures instead of the essence, and the system would be able to pay for itself in about ten to eleven years, you know, electricity saving. Your name for the record?
Oh.
Last of the last, two nine seven four one, Alpha Drive, Puerto Rico. I do a lot of A B U in that same room. There's, there's also, next is Linda Redmond, followed by Jennifer. And she will be followed by Jennifer.
Good evening, council. You all know who I am, but just in case, my name is Elvin Holly, and you know why I'm here. I'm here to see the turf field through. Although I am very proud that we have made it this far, I'm a bit disappointed and frustrated that it hasn't been a smoother journey to get to this point, especially since my partner's Make-A-Wish. And this wish benefits so many young athletes in our community. That said, I know I'm now a little stranger to adversity and do tend to take the road less traveled. When I'm alone with my thoughts, I imagine our community coming together on a Christmas autumn evenings with the band learning their music while cheering on our football players under the glow of the stadium lights of our very own turf field. With your full funding support of the field, we can create a hub for all the athletes and camaraderie where all ages train, compete, and form never-lest memories and love for a sport. Together, we can make this vision a reality. I am asking you one more time to please support my wish for a multipurpose turf field at DHS. Thank you so much for your support. Special thanks to Make-A-Wish for being involved in advocating on my behalf. And finally, thank you to my army. Thank you for coming along this ceremony. I could have done it if I had to. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jen Paul, we have Ryan Chandler.
Good evening, council members, Elgin Army and Make-A-Wish. I am a proud colleague of Elgin. What Elgin didn't say is this last speech was a challenge for her to write, as it was for me. Maybe it's because we feel like everything could be said in support of the field has already been said. But it can't hurt to remind you one last time that we are on the precipice of something really great here. We are so very close, so close. From the beginning, this council has seen and heard from Elgin and her army. You have heard directly from Elgin where she described her angerism, her perseverance and her recovery, and her motivation for this wish. You have directly witnessed her drive and selflessness to get this field and see it through. And you have heard her army tell you about her compassion and resolve both on and off the field. From the beginning, this council has seen and heard from her parents, her mom making sure to know all of these things, not only about Elgin, but about how a turf field could transform our communities. And you have also heard from her dad telling you about the impact of Elgin's injury on her family and those around her, especially Elgin's army who you see here tonight. But perhaps what we lack or have not really thought about is seeing this journey through Elgin's eyes. Every day, I see this amazing young woman who is overcoming the odds through effort, determination, and heart, and all without negativity or regret. Elgin continues to teach me so much. Most importantly, she has taught me to see beyond my pain, beyond her pain. She has taught me to keep going, to fight, and never give up. While I'm sure she gets sad and frustrated because of her physical limitations, she sure doesn't show it. She is the first to support someone else who is struggling and continues to mentor young women who are becoming field hockey greats. I am glad that those around her know how much she's been through and how truly amazing she is. And then I look around this room and I'm just like. So I guess that's what I can do to convince you one last time to fully fund the turf field is to leave you with two things. This view and the miracle. This view, please take it in, of the up-and-coming athletes, the coaches, Elgin's army, Make-A-Wish, and the community, who have come together and all supported us from the beginning. Take it in, the love in this room, this is the very best of us coming together for a cause greater than ourselves. This is what community looks like. Yes, you are in the presence of something grand. Please take it in. And finally, the miracle that is my daughter, Elgin Halli. This lovely, talented athlete of generous spirit sitting before you, who survived when nobody thought she would, who has remained true to herself when nobody thought she could, and whose rich humility continues to astound. You are in the presence of this miracle who puts her light out into the world so that others can shine. What a gift, what a gift for all of us to be a part of. Please honor this gift and Make-A-Wish come true by fully funding the field. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ryan Chandler. We have Michael Hawley.
My name is Ryan Chandler, advocate, eighty-two, eighty-nine, and campus official here in Easton. What a tough act to follow, I must say, Charlie. So good afternoon, board members, academics, friends, and most importantly, our miracle. I'm Ryan Chandler, father of three girls that have or will graduate from Easton High. I'm a huge proponent of sport and all it does for its participants. I'm the husband to the coach that introduced Elgin to the sport of field hockey, and one simple outlet that morphed into a passion and formed her into the person she is today. By now you've heard her backstory and the miracle that she experienced to overcome that awful tragedy. This evening, I'm planning to share a few thoughts that officially join and officially join the movement imploring you to make the right decision, right for wish. I read an article recently from Psychology Today that discussed the link of camaraderie and competitiveness. There were life-changing aspects of sport mentioned that I feel our school administration may be looking past based on the state of our facilities. Examples cited include a sense of security and belonging, boosting confidence, promoting cooperation, and enhancing the enjoyment and fun associated with being part of something bigger and more important than oneself. While we're lobbying to enhance our athletic field and level up to our competition, the BIPOD will help produce more confident, proud, selfless, happier kids like you. They will go on to be better humans. Let's turn the page and embrace what athletics can do for our kids, and it starts by providing the right tools for them to do the job. The most competitive field hockey team in Easton's conference has turf fields. The path to the state finals is play on turf. The Stephen fundamentals skills of the game with play on turf compared to a bumpy grass field, I liken to you guys doing your job with an old Talbot PC paired with a hundred-pound monitor connected to the internet via dial-up. Advance to the next level of your career using those tools while your competitors are running state-of-the-art MacBooks using gigabyte connections. Can you feel your confidence growing? Are you ready to conquer the world? A turf field is that MacBook for our kids. Trying to respect our time constraint, I call out, I cut out a few of fond memories, but I'd like to share my favorite of least hockey career thus far. It took place at Sussex Academy, a high school in Delaware with new model turf fields in mid-June two thousand twenty-one. The club field hockey club was hosting a practice in partnership with the University of Connecticut to help expose the players that collegiate coaches. At events few months since I saw Elgin play, although my daughter was part of the club just in a different age bracket, I always looked for her at these events. It took me a few minutes to find her, as I may seem, is how many goalies did there be, right? But she had transformed. Goalies typically wear oversized jerseys when they're playing, but not today. She didn't have that jersey now, just her pads. So she was fleetless, gunning on bold display. Her pads were all black. She looked like a warrior ready for battle. I sat her in awe. She was dying, charging, yelling, and saving shots nothing right. With each die, my awe turned into sheer happiness. Her confidence was overflowing, the commitment and work she got put in was from the center. She had arrived and she was ready to put her stamp on the paint. You know the time line for a per play to that someone. Here we are again. So back to the turf field and the opportunity that you have. To build it in her honor would represent the true love, compassion, growth, confidence, pain, suffering, commitment, camaraderie, dedication, and selflessness she has experienced along her field hockey journey. Through all of the battles she experienced, providing a field for those to come, I imagine will feel like redemption for her. Help her lay down the legacy that was so inexplicably ripped away. Give her that peace. I have never heard he express anger or frustration about this horrendous circumstance. Well, damn it, I'm mad and I'm frustrated, but I am just the voice. You are a catalyst, or could be. Help secure his legacy and be the one to transcend ease of warrior athletics to the next level in Easton, she deserves.
Thank you. We have Judith Hawley. I'll give you the lessons to have sorted out. If there are others who wish to speak, you may come up to the microphone and if you'd love that, you have Judith Hawley.
Good evening. I'm going to be reading this on behalf of Mayor Cook. She prepared a letter if she couldn't be here and asked if we could read it. Dear County Councilmembers, During the Eastern Town Council meeting on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, Jennifer Longley spoke regarding her daughter Elgin's wish for a multi-purpose turf field that Easton High School saved. Elgin's wish is so close to becoming a reality. Elgin suffered from brain aneurysm while on Easton High School's field hockey field on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and owes firsthand a benefit-add to turf field for her fellow and future students. Elgin's army has been working hard to see her dreams come true. With this in mind, I'm asking that you consider support for her efforts to secure a turf field for Easton High School and its athletes. Please consider funding to make Elgin's wish a reality and funding for the turf field at Talbot County Schools upcoming vote. The future of our athletes and their well-being is not only Elgin's wish, but a wish for our entire community. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Lady J. L. Cook.
And I'll just add something from Dad here, if you give me a second to change gears there. We've heard about psychology and well-being of people and the well-being of girls. As a community part of it, I think I told you guys at the first one, I came in here to the eastern shore out of the military after a twenty-year, a twenty-two-year stint. Then deployed to all sorts of places, all sorts of things. I came in, did not want to leave the military, was not comfortable with it, I wanted to stay forever. And I came to the eastern shore, and I don't know if you guys know or not, but you're a hard bunch to crack. But we came in here and the biggest thing that we had to break down those walls, get angry, Master Sergeant out of me, get into the next chapter, was this group of people you see right here. A great group of people who saw me through the worst tragedy that my family has ever gone through. It's these places where we can gather as a community and they can break down the walls and I can break down the walls to accept them and everybody can accept one another. Having something like this to come to and be part of is, it's been an honor. It's been a pleasure. I thank everybody here. I thank everybody Elgin has been on the way. I thank the council members. Thank you for your time and we really appreciate it all. Thank you.
Dr. Hawley, I realize I broke the protocol. I didn't give you an opportunity to come up first.
I didn't mind what they announced. Good evening, President Calahan, council members, County Manager Chris Stan, and staff. My name is Dr. Shemper. I am a proud superintendent of Talbot County Public Schools, alum of G C P S and a resident of the county. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. As a reminder of what we have been focusing on this year, our monthly, our three priorities. Increasing student qualifications in math, fostering an amazing environment for our students and staff, recruiting and retaining highly qualified individuals. Furthermore, we've woven the five pillars of the blueprint into our priorities or they too are in place for human success. With funding last year, we were able to hire additional social workers. We now have two career counselors that partner with the workforce development board. Most recently, this year we had two very successful career pairs that repelled at both high schools. A reading session is on board to assist students not yet proficient in L.A. We have math coaches to assist teachers in using the best research-based teaching practice. We're celebrating two newly nationally board-certified teachers and thirty-eight that are pursuing. We have an additional multilingual teacher and multilingual navigator to assist students and families with what they need for school success. We received the certification of White Marsh Elementary School and Easton Elementary School pre-day programs, and we're still at the top of this for having high graduation rates. Our celebratory list could go on and on, but our time is limited. What we're seeing with the data is that for grades three through five in L.A., we decreased by twenty-four percent students that are in the lowest performance level. In grade seven and eight, we showed an average of thirty-two percent increase scoring proficient in L.A. For high school, an eight-point-seven increase in students being proficient. For math, grades three through algebra one, the number of students with disabilities that are being proficient has increased by forty-two percent. There was a forty-seven percent increase in the number of students earning passive scores on A P Mathematics Assessments. At the conclusion of this school year, we will have a final report out of our data points connected to our priorities. We're making strides with our students, thanks to our dedicated staff, and it is teacher appreciation week. So we want to thank our staff and our teachers that work hard for the success of our students. You've joined with me, myself, my board, and we've had a few collaborative interactions this year. I invited you to our learning walks so you could see firsthand the wonderful things taking place in our schools and you've joined me with that. We've conveyed the story of our work we've done and still need to do during the budgeting process. And I'm excited that you made education one of your priorities in your budget strategy. Your fiscal year twenty-five budget appropriation includes two-point-eight million above what was made through the funding formula and an additional one-point-five million for capital projects, and I thank you for that. While I know you are mindful of the impact on the citizens of Talbot County, and that's to be commended, I am asking for an additional two hundred thousand, which should pay for our instructional software. All of the data that we are inputting and monitoring is being done previously by one person creating pivot tables in Excel. Having software that can give us the data quickly can afford us the opportunity to validate our practices or change our course of action more quickly and efficiently. It will also round with two-point-eight million to three, giving three million over what was made. By aligning research, practice, and progress, we can catalyze tangible progress in student outcomes, ensuring that each student sees the support they need and deserve to thrive. I look forward to ending our school year just as strong as we started. I transform you and perform you, leading and learning together as sister community. I'll implore you to continue joining our learning walks, engage with us during our joint work session, and inquire with any questions or concerns you have along the way. I have no doubt that our continued partnership will continue to flourish as we focus on the common commitment of educating our Talbot County Public Schools students. And I'd be elusified if I didn't recognize our leadership team who are here that helped me do work so they could just stand in the back and they're all sitting in the back awaiting the G C P S leadership team that helped me make the work done. So thank you for your time.
Dr. Hawley, could you just repeat the two hundred thousand?
Technology software, technology software.
Thank you. My name is Sean Fiole, and I'm seven as of the Talbot County. I live in federal service in Carolina County, but I am the branch manager to the St. Michael's Library of the Talbot County Public Schools. And I want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for your support, oh, and board members, for the libraries, particularly our project for expanding and renovating Genshin Michaels. Listening to all of the things that the school system do, support them and partner with them as well for all of the things that we've had. And one of the things we're proud of is that all of the students in Talbot County School have library records. And they're able to certainly use our electronic resources, but they can also use that card to check out the materials. So we're glad to be able to do that. But I do want to thank all of you for, again, your support for the library and how much we appreciate that and we follow to that innovation and having a wonderful building and very amazing libraries.
Hi, my name is Mary Colna, two eight Sunday on Utron Street, Easton High, and the treasurer for the Board of Justice School Library. And I'd like to want to thank you for your unwavering support of the library system for the years. As our president said this afternoon, we're coming up on our hundred-year anniversary, and you guys have been great supporters throughout the whole time, even though you don't really look that old. And recognizing that the library is the place to live for long learning and the investment in the library's investment that we make. And thank you for being responsive to the community in St. Michaels and funding their expansion and we hope to see you there in the fall. Thank you.
My name is Robert Quone. I live at one along West Orange Street in St. Michael's. I am the vice president of the Board of Justice School of the Library. I just want to, again, thank you all for your support. As a former public high school senior teacher now, so I can tell you it is absolutely instrumental for students to have a strong library and be successful. And the transformative aspects of that is fundamental. But in addition to that, I think we are one, if not the most diverse in terms of the audience that we serve within our community. We have a large number of individuals that come hot of variety of ways, sitting in court, and related to the work that we're doing. Essentially, one of the differences is I think people prior to pandemic saw the library as a pository of books. And now we really understand that it is a connectivity to the world around them, the wide variety of ways. We're able to provide resources through multiple intelligence, through multiple language. We're able to provide resources through multiple colleges, through multiple languages, through a wide variety of resources, and through the expansion, we're able to do that in a much better way than building a pad of sweat beat. I know it's taken me a long time, and we've only over 10 years, but through your generosity, we've been able to leverage this, this support from the state, so thank you very much.
I also think you should be on the turf field.
My name is Justin Peet, I live at 29064, Tepia Circle. I would like to change the support of Elvin, changing our field to be a turf field, because I am in the marching band, I play flute, and Elvin is still in the marching band, but she plays saxophone. And being in the marching band has been challenging for us. Our school is different from every other school that we've been at. It's a very different feeling of being on, of being not gray grass, that is always unkept, it's helped us from practice, performances. It has led us back a lot that have been injuries because of it, and changing it would benefit not only the sports and everyone else's activities and all that, but definitely benefit the marching bands. So, you know, it would be great to change it. And the beginning, at the beginning of the year?
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, I'm, that's okay, I have a, we tell a square, I'm in the, as the beginning, at the beginning of the year, we weren't able to practice our field show because they were taking other fields with a turf field that would change that to be able to work for their competitions, if that.
Thank you. Thank you to anybody else. The record, the record on the customer remains open, written comments will be accepted by the county council until Friday, May 9th at noon. Email comments can be sent to publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov. And bill number 1553, this budget ordinance available for vote on Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. Thank you all for your input tonight, thank you all for your thoughtful input, and if you haven't spoken, we have seen your presence. Thank you all for being here.